We recognize that they're not fully.
Appreciate you taking time out of your busy schedule to come out here and join us this evening for tonight's City Commission meeting, especially since the sun is starting to shine and, you know, most of us have endured rain and showers and cloudy skies. So, thanks for being here. I'm going to call to order the May 13th, 2019 Royal Oak City Commission Meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Perusch, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you can.
As we gather here this evening, we look forward to a season of growth and renewal in our community, and we look with pride at the hundreds of students who are graduating in the coming weeks and wish them well in their next adventure. At the same time, we again all mourn the tragic loss of life that has taken place on a dramatic scale in other communities across our country, as well as individual tragedies that take place every day in other communities as well as our own, large and small. May we as a community recommit to treat our fellow citizens with mutual respect, understanding, and support. And may we reach out to those who are struggling with personal loss of whatever kind to promote healing and well-being in our community and around the nation. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that brings us to public comment. Just a few reminders and some of the ground rules with public comment. The Commission values and relies upon the input of our fellow citizens to make decisions. Now's the time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on any city-related issues, whether or not they're on the agenda or not this evening. As there are no public hearings scheduled for tonight's meeting, this will be the only time for the public to address the City Commission. And I ask when you come up here that you address your comments to the Commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. If you wish to speak tonight at public comment, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor. Raise your hand, come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes afforded to you. And the reason why we have three minutes is because we want to be mindful of everybody else that wishes to speak here tonight. If you don't wish to speak tonight, no problem. You can reach out to us anytime. And note that the City Commission will not respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we're taking notes, and when the agenda topic comes up in front of us, we'll ask those questions for you, as well as, if it's not on the agenda, we're taking notes and referring it to the proper City Department for appropriate follow-up. With that, who's first tonight? Yes, sir.
My name is Bill Willard. I live at 216 Maxwell. And first of all, I'd like to congratulate the city officials on getting the railroad crossings on Fourth Street, Lincoln repaired. I don't know what you did to get the CNN to capitulate, but congratulations. However, in the Oakland press, they reported that story, but they also said that you were negotiating somebody on behalf of the city about the aesthetic beauty of the viaducts in the city and how the railroad might address those. I'm all for that, but I'm even more for safety, and I think you've got a safety problem with these viaducts. I walk the neighborhoods with my wife most days, and there's three viaducts in particular that we walk under, the ones on 11 Mile, one on Fartum, and the one on Catalpa. Now, the 11 Mile viaduct, to tell you the truth, if you lived in the city long enough, I've lived here 53 years, and that viaduct has leaked onto the pavement on 11 Mile Road for the 53 years. If you walk there tonight, there's water under both sides of the sidewalk on 11 Mile. The leak is on both sides. The thing that's plaguing the viaduct right now on both sides is broken glass. There's broken glass on both sides. It's very difficult to walk a dog through there for fear they'll cut their paws. And the other thing that I just don't understand, for years, while there are absolutely no lighting installed under 11 Mile Viaduct at all, there's not even lights that don't work. There's no lighting. I think that you got a real problem because nobody can escape, because if somebody lurks down there in between the pillars, they can't run out 11 Mile because it's blocked off. So, it's a real problem as far as I'm concerned. So, that's viaduct number one. Viaduct number two is Catalpa, is on Fartum by the middle school where it joins Minding Your Park. Even though the city has tried to clean this up, and Mr. Russell's been real good about this over the last two years, the railroad right away, in a big rainstorm, gravel drains down onto the sidewalk, creates a muddy hole, but gravel, and I've actually seen on our walks where kids on scooters and on tricycles have got stuck by the rocks on the pavement. What Mr. Russell's done, what the city's done in cutting down trees to avoid a drug deal that my daughter reported once, that's important, but they're Band-Aids. The CNN has got to come through and fix this on a more permanent basis. The lighting there, there are lights, but they haven't worked for as long as I can remember. They do not work. They're relying on a street light down the street on both sides, but the lights don't work at all. On the one on Catalpa, much neater, not a lot of complaints about that, except that on one side of the street, the north side, the lights don't work, even though there's an electric meter right underneath it. On the south side of the street, eastbound, the light stays on all the time. It never shuts off. I don't really care about that, but there is electricity to that intersection. So, what I'm hoping you will do, if you are going to enter into negotiations with CNN, and they don't revert back to their old stance, and I'm going to tell you why I say that, because when I first started calling about this two and a half years ago, I talked to an official in the city who shall go nameless.
Mr. Willard, I do need you to finish your last point, sir.
I will finish up. Just finish up my last sentence. I'll say this, that the problem was, the problem was that CNN is not bound by any ordinances, and I understand that. When I was told by a city official, "You've got a better chance of calling Help Me Hank than you ought to get this done," then we've got a problem in this city. And I really think that if you've got the opportunity to negotiate with the CNN, I would follow through and do it and make these viaducts and all the other viaducts in Royal Oak that I don't walk under much more safer than they are right now.
Thank you, Mr. Willard. Mr. Ashley.
Good evening. My name is Alan Ash, and I live at Royal Oak Manor. Sorry, the allergies have gotten to me already. I would like to fill in the blanks of a posting on one of the commissioners who posted something in Facebook about the parking situation at Royal Oak Manor. I want to fill in a little blanks and correct one thing. Way back when I went to the DDA and I suggested that they make all the parking meters, give us permit parking around Royal Oak Manor, and before I even got it out of my mouth, I was told that'll never happen, so forget it. Next, I come here, and this was about a year ago, about the property at 222 Sixth Street, which is right across from the Fire Department and right on the corner of Williams and Sixth and Troy and Sixth. I said, "Why don't you use one of your grant money, which is freebie money from the federal government, and tear down the building, stripe it, and put it in, and then let us pay you back by the number of people that parked there, and we won't have to have people parking in P7?" I was told, "Oh, that's a terrific idea. We'll give it to staff, and staff will look into it and come back with an answer." Well, it's been over a year. I haven't heard a peep out of staff. Nobody's contacted me. Nobody's contacted CSI because I checked with them today. So, I don't know where your staff is. I don't know what's going on, but somewhere, nothing's getting done. And that's the problem we're living in now. Right now, we have approximately 243, 45, because we've had a couple of move-ins, and we have 130 people, 135 people that are parking, total parking, that have cars. That's 55% of the seniors in our senior home that are drivers. You've got to remember that I was born in '46, so I am the beginning of the baby boomers. There's more to come, and we are movers. We put a man on a moon with a 64K computer. Today, you carry around 2 gigabytes in your phone. We did a lot of moving. We do that, and I see nothing happening. And this idea that, "Well, don't rent to people who have cars," we can't. It's against fair housing rules. So, forget that. That is illegal. And because we are a federal building, we can't do that. So, that idea, forget it. It won't happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley. All right, who's next? Is that Mr. Karlowsky? By one eye, I could tell.
Hello, Rick Karlowsky, 419 Virginia. First comment is on the park renewals, at least the ones that I have seen. We've cut out the sandboxes. I'm not sure why, but I do have see you kids passing by my house with their buckets and pails that normally go down to the Barton Park there to mess around in the sand, and they can't. And they were actually digging, before it was grassed, the little berm by the exercise equipment. So, I don't know why the sandboxes were removed, but if we could get them back in, that would be, I think, would be great, because a lot of the kids did use it. I know why we did it from time to time to make sure it wasn't getting overgrown, but construction trades are still viable, and that's a good place to start. Second thing is on the gun violence proclamation, which is all fine and good, but I was here a few weeks or a while back when we were looking over the liquor license reviews, and we have one establishment in this town that has had at least two gun incidents, and it doesn't seem to bother anybody. I mean, I think Mr. B's had one internally and one where the guy was running around the street. It's one thing, I realize this election year and everything, but it's one thing to be worried about gun violence, and then when we have an institution or an establishment in the town that has records of gun violence that just seem to flip off when we come around for liquor license reviews. I don't know what's going on here, but I would think you'd want to take a look at that and do something about that as much as making a proclamation about gun violence in general, because we obviously have somewhat of an issue in a couple of establishments, and they should be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karlowsky. Mr. Wolf.
Ron Wolf, 333 North Troy Street. First, I want to address what Mr. Ashley was talking about. You know, I'm not just as angry at the Commission. I feel kind of sad that only a handful of people got up to support the people at Royal Oak Manor. You know, some of the horrible things that happened to people on this sad planet lately, and not so lately, is the complicity of those that say nothing while the government does whatever it wants to. And this is really sad with Royal Oak Manor. It's just a handful of people, and I think the problem can easily be solved. And I'm still asking to dig deeper and deeper until you find that conscience that we like to talk about, but seldom use. Now, priorities. What are our priorities? Are they developers, contractors, or banners, you know, nicely designed banners showing what we've done recently that cost a lot of money? Or do we have priorities like safe traffic lights, so seniors and handicapped can cross streets safely, or just parking for handicapped as well as seniors? Now, here are some observations. The city of Birmingham years ago had a problem filling its new structure, and I learned that they now assess businesses downtown to maintain, they're allowing two-hour free parking until midnight in their central structure. I also learned that in the past year or two, they allowed free parking for a month or two on Saturdays as a promotion, and this was very successful. I learned this from a waiter. I am aware of the bonding obligations for the new structure, but note that there are few parking structures anywhere that make a profit, as they are always about one-third empty. Also noted is that is the opinion of at least one prominent business owner, that if our city approached the DDA for help to extend the free two-hour parking to midnight, it would be totally rejected. Yes, Birmingham charges its businesses a tax so they can keep this parking structure open to midnight for two-hour free parking. So, my idea is, why not use part or all of this proposed $60,000, $65,000 available for parking promotion for a trial balloon copying some of Birmingham's free two-hour parking to midnight until the money runs out? And if this works out, as I'm pretty sure it will, not only would this bring more foot traffic downtown, it would also make our city competitive with both Ferndale and Birmingham, a lot more competitive. Hopefully, when the promotion money runs out, our businesses will see the improvement and then be more receptive to contribute to support free two-hour parking to midnight in at least two of our downtown structures.
Mr. Wolf, I do need you to finish your last point, sir.
Yes, just one more sentence, please. May I? Which would attract street parkers to our structures, which is what you want. If approached, I would think Henry Ford Clinic and other firms now contracted for reserved parking would, for their own benefit, contribute to our city's ability, our city's business climate, as well as its ability to meet its bonding obligations. So, think about that. And every city has its bad and good. There are some things I saw in Birmingham, I don't have time to talk about, that weren't so good, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Ms. Ma'am.
Hi, I'm Taryn Grobel, Ann Hurst, Royal Oak.
I'm Elisa Braddock, 430 Linden Avenue.
I'm a freshman at Royal Oak High School.
I'm a junior at Royal Oak High School.
We're here on behalf of Students to Demand Action, Oakland McComb, and the hundreds of lives that are taken due to gun violence every day. The residents of Royal Oak wish to enlist your aid in helping to stop the epidemic of gun violence in our country. Specifically, we are requesting that the city of Royal Oak issue a proclamation declaring that Friday, June 7th, 2019, be proclaimed as National Gun Violence Awareness Day or Wear Orange Day. This request is being made to honor the 100-plus people killed daily by guns in our country and is meant to raise awareness in a non-political nature. Sadly, for every person killed, an average of two or more are wounded. Gun deaths take on many forms, including suicides, domestic violence, unintentional shootings, and homicides. Gun violence is now the second-leading cause of death for American children. In fact, 51 children are shot and killed every day. By proclaiming the first Friday in June as National Gun Violence Awareness Day, Royal Oak will join hundreds of others across our nation in bringing attention to these tragedies. The color orange has a long and proud history in the gun safety movement. Orange is the color that Hadiah Pendleton's friends wore in honor of her after she was shot and killed at Chicago at the age of 15, just one week after performing at President Obama's second inauguration parade in 2013. Whether it's worn by hunters in the woods of Pennsylvania, activists in New York City, or Hadiah's loved ones in Chicago, orange honors the 100 lives cut short and the hundreds more wounded by gun violence every day, and it demands action. Since the first National Gun Violence Awareness Day in 2015, hundreds of communities and organizations continue to commemorate that event by wearing orange, holding community events, lighting skylines orange, and issuing city and state proclamations to raise awareness. We are hoping that after reviewing this request, you will proclaim June 7th, 2019 to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. You have a copy of this proclamation, and please feel free to contact any of us in addition for any information if you make your decision. Thank you for your consideration and action on this important issue. With all respect, Ally Ingles, Elliot Wid, Jonah Kubitschek, Taryn Grobel, Danny Williams, Isabel Castilla, Elisa Braddock, and Taylor DeRosa. Thank you.
No, thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. London.
David London, 5132 Thornecroft Court. I'm here tonight as the chairman of the Veterans Events Committee. I would like to personally invite every one of you to the Memorial Day Parade and the ceremony afterwards. Actually, I'll drop these off with the clerk after this. This year, it's not going to be anything new or exciting largely because we lack so much parking, so we're structuring this year around the progress that the city's being made, and we would recommend that everyone who's able-bodied would park in the Center Street Garage this time, although we do have the Superior Fish open on that morning to allow for people who need a little bit of extra care, and we'll have shuttles on both of those. I would like to give these to the clerk, but I'd also like to point out that this year, we have, our grand marshal is Captain Rich Luderman, the meteorologist from Fox. He was a United States Air Force captain, and he will be our grand marshal this year. And we also have, as our guest speaker for the ceremony afterwards, is the president of the Prisoner of War Committee, because one of the things that I tried to bring to the table this year is, we talk about Memorial Day quite a bit, about those who have given their lives. We often forget about those who didn't give them voluntarily, POWs, MIAs. So, we'll bring that to the forefront as well. And I would like to say, shout out to the students over here. As an advocate for veteran suicide, that is a big issue, and as a veteran, I want to thank them for that. But I'll drop these off with the clerk, and I hope to see every one of you there. I will work with anyone who wants to talk about the beforehand, getting up to the stands, and we can get together afterwards. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. London. Alex.
Good evening. I'm Alex Williams from Mitchum Chapel Ame Church, 4207 West 14 Mile. So, for the last several meetings, I've come and talked to you about peanut butter and jelly, and this, I promise, will be the last time for about nine months. Just wanted to thank everybody who made a donation in one way or another. We had several cash donations. We had a lot of donations downstairs in this building, and many from our congregation, you know, our congregants and many others, friends of the church. Our goal was 1,000 jars of peanut butter and jelly. We actually collected 2,191. So, we're going to be able to help a whole lot of people with all of that, and I, again, just want to thank everyone who contributed.
Mr. Williams, thanks to you and Mr. Boyd. You guys do an amazing job, Reverend Boyd, rather, and really appreciate how you're helping the fabric of this community. So, thank you. Thank you. Who's next? Anybody else going once? Ms. Morales?
Evening, Bella Morales, 2722 North Vermont. I just wanted to share with you that I've been out and about collecting signatures from my neighbors and introducing myself to our local business owners, and I just wanted to share that there's a lot of positive energy and excitement coming from business owners. I know the owner of Toiology was talking about thinking about the long game and how he's excited to see what his business is going to be like five years, 10 years from now. He did admit that there has been some downturn in sales, but he thinks it's very minor compared to how his business is going to grow now that we have the new Civic Center project. So, I just wanted to share that there's a lot of really good energy out there. I know sometimes it's positive energy is not as easily heard as hate and anger, so it's not all bad. So, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. Anybody else here wish to speak tonight at public comment? Going once, going twice. All right, we're going to close public comment, bring the discussion back up to the side of the table, which brings us to item number five, which is the approval of the agenda. And I know there's a lot of folks here tonight that have taken time out of their busy schedules, sports schedules, academic schedules, and, you know, algebra, or whatever you guys are doing, nuclear physics in the ninth grade by now, I imagine. And so, I think it was recommended that we move item number nine up to be the first agenda item after the consent agenda, if whoever wishes to make the motion. Commissioner Dubach?
So moved.
So moved, seconded by Commissioner Macy. All right, discussion. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we have an agenda. This brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda for this evening? Commissioner Perusch.
I'd like to pull off item number F. Not that there's anything controversial about that, but I think there's a couple of cool things that I could highlight if we pull that off the consent agenda.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. With that, we have a consent agenda that consists of City Commission meeting minutes from the 8th and 22nd of April, approval of appointments committee recommendations, approval of appointments committee rotation, claims from April 26th, May 7th, May 10th, approval of ESRI contract renewal, ARC GIS Enterprise and GEO Event Server, approval of interlocal agreement for continuing legal education, approval of release of all claims, Kelly versus City of Royal Oak, receive and file non-action items, which is the April 2019 Investment Report, City Commission Proclamation Policy, and the April 2019 Franco Project Activity Report. Is there a motion? Moved by Commissioner Macy, seconded by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion. With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. This brings us to item letter F from the consent agenda. Commissioner Perusch.
I could talk about that, but I thought perhaps you were going to do the gun violence awareness thing first. It's up to you.
Well, okay, we can do that, actually. Is there any objection to that?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Typically, we do the consent agenda items, but if there's no objection to that, we can do that. Okay, perfect. So, first of all, just a mayoral note here. I see a lot of young people out there in the crowd today, and I can't thank you enough, and we can't thank you enough, for making time to come out here tonight, not only to, you know, help us understand some of the issues that are on your mind, but also speak to a very important issue passionately, articulately, and without letting your foot off the gas pedal. So, we appreciate the conversation we're going to have here tonight, and we're grateful for your participation in that discussion. But I want to hand it over to Commissioner Dubach right now, because he's been instrumental in championing to make sure that we have this proclamation in front of us. Commissioner Dubach.
Thank you, Mayor. I wouldn't say I deserve all that much credit. Obviously, the students brought this to us. They made this request, and it's been a couple of years now that, you know, in the wake of the steady beat of tragedies, our young people have had to take leadership on this issue to raise awareness about gun violence, and it's hard to talk about. So, I am just inspired by the bravery and the leadership that they've shown, and hopefully, they will make more progress on this issue than we have been able to, because we continue to fail to make this right. There's not a lot that can be done from this table, but we can show our support for your efforts. And so, thank you, Ms. Braddock and Ms. Grobel for your words and for bringing this forward. And we do have a resolution before us in support of the proclamation declaring June 7th as Gun Awareness Day. And I can read that, I guess, if folks would like.
Please do.
Whereas students across the country and in Royal Oak have decided it's past time to demand action against the staggering number of deaths caused by gun violence in our country, and whereas just weeks after marching in President Obama's second inaugural parade, a teenager, Hadiya Pendleton, was tragically shot and killed, and to honor Hadiya, a group of her friends asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, a color they chose, excuse me, a color they chose because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters who went in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas, from this idea begun by a group of high school students, a national coalition of organizations has grown this into a National Day of Gun Violence Awareness on the first Friday of June each year. And whereas June 7th, 2019, will be the first National Day of Gun Violence Awareness, and whereas students from Relic High School marched to honor the National Day of Awareness in tune of 2018, and where it is time for the Royal Oak City Commission to recognize and support the students in their efforts to bring awareness to the impact that gun violence has on our society, now therefore be resolved, the Royal Oak City Commission resolves to issue the following proclamation, which is the proclamation that was read earlier today. Thank you. I'll move for the resolution.
We have a motion by Commissioner Dubach, and a second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion. Okay, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. This leads us to the proclamation itself.
Thought I could do that.
Commissioner Macy, do you want to read the proclamation?
No. I think Commissioner Dubach made that impossible, so I will leave it to you.
That's what I was worried about. All right, we'll get through this. Before I read it again, I just want to echo a lot of what Commissioner Dubach said and the sentiment of what this commission feels. You know, there's a duty among all of us in society to make the world a better place, and often, we forget about the power of young voices. And your voices are being heard, and we encourage you to be louder and louder and more vigilant. There's a national crisis we have going on in this country right now, and the adults have failed to fix it. You're our hope on this issue. You're our hope, and you're our voice. You're our hope, and you're our voice, and we hear you loud and clear. And hopefully, even with proclamations like this, more people will hear us more loudly and more clearly. Thank you. This is a proclamation designating June 7th, 2019, as National Gun Violence Awareness Month. Whereas every day, more than 100 Americans are killed by gun violence, and on average, there are nearly 13,000 gun homicides every year. Whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other high-income countries. And whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is a mayor's highest responsibility. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. Whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best and are most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. Whereas in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton, a teenager who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade and was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, showed, should be now celebrating her 22nd birthday, should be now celebrating her 22nd birthday. And whereas to honor Hadiya and the 100 Americans whose lives are cut short and the countless survivors injured by shootings every day in the first Friday in June is designated as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Whereas June 17th, 2019, will be the fifth National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 7th to help raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can do to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Mayor Fournier, and the members of the Royal Oak City Commission hereby proclaim the first Friday in, in June, June 7th, 2019, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day and encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor the value of human lives. We can clap. We did this. I don't know if anyone has any other words they wish to share. Commissioner Dubbuck? Well, thank you for coming out tonight. We appreciate the continued dialogue and discussion, and we took a stand tonight, and we got a lot more action ahead of us, so thank you. Resolution? All right, and I just, yeah. So unceremoniously, we'll head to... Do we have a signed proclamation for them or no? Yeah. That is a great question. I don't know that we, we definitely have a signed digital version. We'll make sure you get the original copy, and we'll present it to you in the proper way. I don't see it here unless it's hiding on me. So I'd love to deliver it to you myself. We'll get it to you. Thank you very much. So Commissioner Perush, after that...
I should have gone first. Just very quickly, I serve on the Rehab Board of Appeals, which goes over and puts together the CDBG program budget annually. And there were a couple of things that I heard this year that are new that I thought needed to be highlighted. So just very quickly, we've had, as a part of our program, our housing rehabilitation program, where we put hundreds of thousands of dollars of CDBG money every year into the housing rehabilitation program, which means that persons of low and moderate income can apply to the city for housing assistance, for housing rehabilitation. And this has been going on since the mid-'70s, since the city first qualified for these types of federal funds. But what I didn't realize, and was mentioned in our meeting when we went over this program last month, was that in terms of the people who apply for and get the low and moderate income loans and grants for housing rehabilitation, the majority of those are senior citizens. And the majority of that majority of senior citizens who qualify and get the low-interest loans and grants are widows, women who are living in their houses, they have lost their, their spouse, they don't want to move, they're capable of living in a single-family home by themselves, but perhaps they can't afford the new roof that the house needs, or the modifications to make other improvements to make it a little bit easier to continue to live there, or other repair-type things. So, and this is, this is a program that kind of goes under the radar. There was an article about it in the last quarter's Insight Magazine, which described the eligibility requirements and so on and so forth. But it's a great program. This year, we're putting $650,000 of federal money into that program, and they hope to assist 35 homeowners just in this one calendar year. We have outstanding, as a community, about $3 million worth of loans, which are coming back in with low-interest loan payments, you know, every month. But that gives you the scope of this program and how many households it has reached over the years. So for those of you who are thinking, you know, perhaps I, I might qualify, or perhaps you know a neighbor or a friend who might qualify, give the housing assistance office a call and, and talk to them, and you might just qualify. The money is there. This is our federal tax money that we all send to Washington. It comes back to us, and we ought to get some benefit out of it. And those who have paid into this program for years should, should get the benefit. So that's one thing that I learned, that I was not aware of before. This year, in this calendar year of, which starts in July 1, with the block grant monies, we're going to be improving Fulton Park, Huntington Park, Wendland Park, and completely new play equipment and, and a new surface in Sullivan Park. So those are the parks that are going to be improved this year. The other thing that we learned this year is that there's a federal agency that calculates or crunches the demographic numbers, the income numbers and ages and so on, to identify in each community that gets block grant money, the census tract areas, which are little block areas within the community that actually have enough residents where, that qualify for using CDBG money. And that's why we target those specific parks that we do every year, because those parks are actually within those census tracts for that particular year. Apparently, the agency that does all of that number crunching decided to do an in-between the census year update as to those numbers. And so just recently, our city, because we're an entitlement community, got a new map of available census tract areas that are eligible for improvements, which means now that some neighborhoods that were not eligible this calendar year will be eligible the next year, which is the 2021 year, which means that there are other parks which we didn't haven't been able to fund any improvements for. Lawson and Franklin, which are down south of Lincoln, are now going to be eligible, and so we're going to be working on improvements to those parks for the next fiscal year. We'll be doing, I'm sure, some community outreach to see what the neighbors would like to see in those parks in terms of improvements and so on. Franklin, of course, was the old site of Franklin School, so it really hasn't been approved since the school was torn down. But, but that's, that's an exciting thing. The other exciting thing that's related to that is, you know, the whole berm issue? You know, do we get rid of the berms that are down there where the traffic goes, where it used to be, the track traffic used to go through? Big debate, do we save the berms? Do we get rid of the berms? The berms look terrible, they're not maintained, which is true. But two of them are alongside Lawson Park. So what the staff has suggested to us, and it will come before all of us at some point, was that we fold those berms, which are two of the, the ones that are tricky as to maintain, into the park redesigned for Lawson Park, so that they're no longer standalone clumps of dead foliage and can get incorporated into the park and then maintained by the park maintenance staff, which will be, make it a whole lot better. So that's an exciting thing, too, that will happen. We'll see not only improvements to the actual parks down in that area, but also just to the aesthetics of those neighborhoods that are bounded by those berms. So those are two different, new, exciting things in this year's block grant program and to be next year's block grant program that we discussed at our meeting this year, and I just said everybody ought to be aware of that. So with that, I will move approval of the proposed CDBG fund budget for this coming year.
Motion by Commissioner Perush. I see support, or seconded by Commissioner Dubbuck. Discussion?
Yeah, just a couple of questions, if not for Commissioner Perush, then for Mr. Murphy. Are the, the home improvement funds, are they limited to the census tracts, to the low-income census tracts, or are they across the city?
No, those are eligible to any single-family, any income-eligible, single-family homeowner.
Okay.
So not based on location, not based on age, strictly based on income.
Got it, great. And is there unmet, are there, is there unmet demand? That is, are we, do we, are we turning people away from that program? Do we?
No, we still have dollars to allocate. Anyone that's interested, is watching on television, can call Debbie Murray at 248-246-3292. Or you can get the paperwork online. But if you call or come in, we'll be more than happy to set you up for an application, interview, and see what type of improvements we'll be able to help out with.
Nicely done. Thank you.
Mr. Macy?
I'm surprised to hear there's money still available, because I thought the program had been closed. Like, I thought year to year, we would, we did, in fact, have more demand than there was.
No, not in the last several years. We haven't maintained a waiting list. Anyone that comes in or calls, we schedule them for an interview to review the paperwork to make sure their income qualified. If their income qualified, we start to process the paperwork to send that out, the repair work out to bid and get price quotes right away. So there's no waiting list whatsoever.
Okay, how do we advertise this program, other than through insight?
Our biggest advertisement is through insight, which is four times a year. And just last week, we mailed out almost three or 400 direct mailers to homeowners within the neighborhood, which is directly west of Beaumont Hospital. We targeted that particular neighborhood this year.
Regarding this program?
Yes.
Okay. What, what made us target that particular neighborhood?
That particular neighborhood had a, some, some statistical data that we thought could use, that was evident, that could use assistance. So we thought that was more of a high-demand area in the city in a particular neighborhood. So we did target that particular neighborhood. But we rotate, we target different neighborhoods every single year.
Just wonder if we should do more outreach if we have money left over. I don't know.
Mr. Perush?
One of the things that was mentioned in our meeting is that so often, when people come in and fill out an application or call, it's not that they've seen any of the publicity or read any of the articles, it's word of mouth. You know, somebody next door is getting a new roof, and, you know, na, 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 and then one thing leads to another, and all of a sudden, somebody else is coming in with an application. Or they hear about it at church or something like that. The staff seems to feel that that's how most people become aware of it. So you're right. I mean, I think, you know, to the extent that we can, we could do more publicity about the program, but a lot, an awful lot of these people are hearing about it word of mouth.
And I also think the challenge is, is that until you need it, you're not really, you're kind of filtering it out. You know, I don't need a new roof, I don't need this. And then boom, when something happens, it's hard to recall that I got a flyer, that it was Insight Magazine, or that I got an email on it. And word of mouth is usually, oh, who do I hire as a contractor? I can't afford this. Well, let me tell you about this great program the city does. I imagine that's a very common scenario. Mr. Dubbuck?
See, a few years back, when I was on Rehab Board of Appeals, we had noticed that we were carrying forward more than, more than we wanted at the end of those years, because we knew that there was, there was the demand. So we did do a kind of a bit of a media strategy, a press release. And after that press release, we saw a spike in demand. And then we actually started growing what we were putting in the fund. So I think it's properly resourced for the demand right now. I think, you know, a little bit, if we get a little earned media on it, that'd be great, let residents know this is out there. But I think it's, it's largely meeting the demand now, because we have grown the pot to some extent over the last few years.
We did have success when we had a publication in the two local newspaper sources. We'd be happy to do, do that again.
We're not looking at the press right now. Mr. Macy?
So I guess I feel like we're maybe not doing an adequate job of advertising this if we have money rolling over and most people are hearing about it word of mouth. That's my opinion, is that if we have extra money, we should be making sure that it gets spent for people who need it. And just rolling it over from year to year, even when we know the demand is out there and we know that people don't know about it, seems like we know a solution to that. We can help them, help them better to know.
Any other discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to the first agenda item after consent, which would be the Downtown Park Task Force recommendation. I see Mr. Russell.
Well, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Perush, as she serves as chairman of the task force, and she can probably summarize it better and more succinctly than I can. I will point out that Mr. Knight of MKSK is here, as well as Justin Rose of Fleece and Vandebreak, if there's any questions about the proposal.
The task force, as you know, requested proposals from a number of design firms in the whole metro area, and statewide. I would imagine those, the requests for proposals even went beyond our state limits. We got back five very good proposals. There, among the five, there was not one that I think either individually or collectively we thought, you know, they just shouldn't have bothered. All five are extraordinarily talented, talented firms with individuals who are creative, who are, who took the time to understand the community, understand the project, have done projects very similar to this in other communities, and came in with outstanding credentials. So we were gratified that we got that to begin with, and we had five very strong firms. After looking over the proposals, we decided to have an interview process for them, where they all came in on the same evening, had a half hour of time to present an oral presentation, a PowerPoint presentation, they all turned out to be. And then there was an opportunity for questions from the task force members. And then we went home to think about it and came back at the next meeting and voted on our primary choice. It was interesting that, in terms of the voting, our final choice was MKSK, who has offices not only here in Detroit, but also within the region, Kentucky, Ohio, offices within the Midwest. They've done a number of projects of this scale. We were impressed with their presentation. We were impressed with the research and history, historical research that they had done about the community and what is going on now. And interestingly enough, of the seven members on the task force, when we just went around the table and said, okay, who's your first choice, who's your second choice? Five of the seven picked MKSK as their first choice. A sixth member of the task force had it as their second choice. So MKSK as a, as a, as an organization came in very strong, and it was apparent, without any discussion beforehand, that that was the preliminary choice of the members of the task force. Our task force meeting to select the winning group started at 6 o'clock on, on a Monday evening, I believe it was a Monday evening, the Monday that we did, we didn't have a commission meeting. We were walking out the door that evening at 6:35, because we voted, we're like, we're done. But we, we are very, very, very impressed with the five, certainly, but definitely with MKSK. We're thrilled that the community is going to be working with them on a going-forward basis, and, and they just seem to get Royal Oak just a little bit better than the other, than the other four. And so we think it's going to be a very positive project moving forward with them. And the next task is to direct the staff to negotiate a contract with them. I should say that all of the five put on their proposals, projected numbers as to how much they thought it would cost to do the design work, to do the public engagement, to do the, the construction oversight, to make sure it was built according to the design that they had put forward. A lot of community engagement with the community, not on top of what we've already done. And the numbers were not that, that much different. There was maybe $100,000 between the lowest dollar amount proposal person and the, the one on top, very, very much within the same ballpark. There were no outliers in terms of the numbers, either one way or the other. And that was, that was gratifying to all of us as well, to know that the numbers we think are going to be manageable. But that is the next task for us, is to direct the staff to actually negotiate a solid contract with MKSK for the design... with MKSK for the design of the Downtown Park, which will, that contract will come back to us. So that'll be the next step. And that's, that's kind of where we are. If you have any questions, I can answer questions, Greg, of course, will answer questions, representatives with MKSK are here, as well as, they are bringing in Fleas and Vanderbreek, which we have used as an engineering firm for a number of projects in the city, as a, as a partner to do a lot of the engineering work on the proposal. And they have a representative with here, here with us, again, this evening as well, I believe, yes. So, that's the news about the Downtown Park.
Questions. Commissioner LaVassar.
I had a slightly different view of this than, than what Commissioner Perush said with regard to the numbers. And what I would have liked to have seen was a graph like we see on a lot of projects, that basically gives one page that says, these are the five bids, these are the, the numbers that we're looking at for each, so we can compare them one side by side on, on one page. As, as it was, the way this was presented to us, it was, this is one we like, if you want to learn a little bit more about it, go look at this link, want to learn a little bit more, go look at these five separate links, they have hundreds of pages of PDFs. And I would prefer to see one page that was basically a summary that presented the price tags. Now, when I came out with it, I did see three that were kind of lumped together, including this one, and then one that was on the higher side, one that was on the lower side. If, if I read the, the proposals correct, this was the second most expensive of the, of the five, but, but it was lumped within the three that were basically very close together, with one that was roughly $50,000 higher, although that was roughly $110,000 or lower. So, so from my perspective, I would have liked to have seen that on one page. And if, if there was a reason to go with this one versus another, I would have preferred to have seen written commentary, why, why this one is preferred, as opposed to the others. If, if they're all companies that were acceptable, that's, that's great. But if there's a reason why this particular company is preferred, I would prefer to see that in writing in advance.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Perush.
I should say that in terms of the meetings that the task force had, we dove deep into the numbers, as well as used evaluation sheets, score sheets, all kinds of other tools to evaluate all of the five. That was certainly done by the task force. I don't know that the task force necessarily thought that the commission would want to wade through all of that detail as well. I can understand your position, and it's certainly available, it's, it's all public information, it was part of the, the information that we delved into before the meeting of the actual interviews. So the, the information is definitely there, available, as well as the score sheets and ratings and so on and so forth, based upon dozens of different types of criteria. Monetary, certainly, but also the, the type of design and the, the type of, of research that the individual, individual firms had demonstrated that they had done in terms of understanding the community before putting forth this proposal. So, there is a lot of detail there, and it's, the detail is available on the task force website, and it's been there for a couple of weeks.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, to echo that, I'm hyperconfident in a citizen committee, led by Commissioner Perush, to evaluate all the different discussions and criteria, since the task force has been in place, and to know from the various pitches and presentations, especially when you don't have a swing that big among the bidders, that, you know, you're going with the, the firm that you feel is most going to deliver upon the vision of the city, and, you know, that vision driven by our residents, for frankly, a resident-driven and oriented committee. So, I'm confident that they did the hard work, the heavy lifting, and I don't see any reason to see any flaws in their work. Commissioner Macy.
I, I looked at all this online, and I watched the, the meeting, I thought it was funny how unanimous it was. I also thought this was fantastic. We had a lot of community engagement already, about what the community wants to see in this Downtown Park. And there's been a lot of clear communication, of vision from, from the city, from the citizens, about what they're looking for. And it's, it's a clear vision, but it's also sometimes incongruous, like, we want it to be both very secluded and also wide open, and we want it to be very active, but at the same time, to have it be quiet when we want it. And I just thought the MKSK presentation had a beautiful vision for ways that we could make that happen. And some of the other parks that they presented as part of their plan were just, I thought, yes, just like that, I want one like that. So I was really excited to see it, and thrilled that the task force made this decision. Looking forward to this new park.
Mr. Dubbuck.
Yeah, I just want to echo that, that's exactly my, I served on the task force, and that was, as Commissioner Perush said, they were all excellent bids, but we had to identify who was most likely to thread that needle. That's clearly been described by, by ourselves and, and the residents, and, and it was clear to all of us, it was nearly unanimous, that MKSK was the way to go. So, yes, we did do a deep dive in all the numbers, all that data was there. Once we had put that aside, recognizing, as Commissioner Perush said, there was pretty much, they were all in a range, we were looking for who was going to execute for our residents. And I'm, I'm really pleased with the decision.
Macy.
I have a question about this. So, as this goes forward and work on the contract details, what's the, what's the next step? There's some community engagement that's going to be happening, do you have any idea on the timeline?
We hope to get the contract to you back within a month, and then start the process after, after that, with a goal of breaking ground after Labor Day of 2020.
Commission could entertain a motion. Commissioner Dubbuck.
I'll move for the resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Dubbuck. We have a second by Commissioner Perush. Discussion? All right. Thank you to the Downtown Park Task Force. I think you guys do excellent work, and, you know, certainly, this is going to be a gem, and it's just not going to pop out of thin air. So we need the help from good partners, and good citizens, making sure that we stay vigilant, and, you know, do the best possible job we can do for this, this park. So, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes.
All right.
This brings us to item number eight, which is proposed amendment to City Commission Meeting Rules and Procedures. Is this going to be Mr. Johnson that has this?
Actually, Mr. Gill.
Mr. Gillum, okay, I had a 50/50 shot there. Okay, that's right, Mr. Gillum.
Mayor Commissioners, these are proposed amendments to your rules of procedure that deal with the timing of the approval of tentative agreements with the city's different employee groups and, and labor units. We've had instances, instances in the past where we've had tentative agreements that have been approved late the week before a city commission meeting, even potentially the same day as a city commission meeting. And we've brought those tentative agreements forward for approval as, as added items to the posted agenda for any given particular city commission meeting. What these amendments would require would be that the tentative agreements be actually posted to the public agenda by 4:30 on the Friday preceding a city commission meeting, at which the tentative agreements would be considered by the city commission for formal approval. So, these amendments potentially could slow down the contract approval process, but we don't feel that they will interfere, really, in any way with our abilities to get agreements done with the different city groups. So, we would recommend approval of the resolution, which in turn would approve the proposed amendments to the rules of procedure.
Commissioner Dubbuck.
Yeah, this is something we've been discussing for a while, I know that Commissioner Marley had, had raised his concerns about this several times over the years, and we were just in a pinch with when the union agreed, and us needing to get the contract signed. So, making it clear puts everyone on notice that we need to make sure that we get our timings spaced out appropriately, so that there's an appropriate amount of time for the public to vet these contracts before we vote on them. So, with that, I'll move for the resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Dubbuck. We have a second by?
No, I have a question.
Commissioner Gibbs, you have a question?
I have a question, yes. Do you want me to wait for a discussion?
Yeah, we can wait for discussions.
A second. A second.
Either way.
I have no discussion, I'm just seconding.
You're just seconding? Okay, we'll give Commissioner Macy the second, since she has verbalized it. Okay. Discussion now. Commissioner Gibbs.
Does this mean that the regular agenda will not be posted until 4:30 on Friday afternoon? No? Because we're pretty used to seeing it.
4:30 on Friday afternoon is the time that we're required to have the regular agenda posted. This doesn't change.
Right, I understand that, but lately, at least, well, I get it early because of where I sit, but...
Commissioners get it on Tuesdays.
Right. But, from what I hear from residents, they, they get it usually, they can see it usually on Thursday. I just don't want to take away time from the residents to be reviewing. Now, if it's, if this is something that's added to it, that's fine, and we all get our text alerts or the email alerts, so, but I, I just want to make sure that we're not holding the agenda until 4:30, in case something might be added.
When we post it on Thursday, which is most of the time.
Right.
That's because we're early. Our deadline right now is 4:30 on Friday.
But, Mr. Johnson, I think the question is, we could still post it on Thursday, and then if we had a situation where there's a union ratifying something Thursday evening or Friday morning, we would just publish the rest of the agenda and then add this attachment on a Friday.
That's been confirmed.
Yeah, yeah. By the, by the required deadline, if it's possible.
Yes.
Yeah. Commissioner Macy.
I mean, I think the question is, we're not changing the practice we already have, which I understand that there's no requirement for it to be posted on Thursday, but when it, when available on Thursday, we're going to continue to post it on Thursday.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I certainly think it's ideal, if we can get it out there sooner, just get it out there sooner, just so that the public has more opportunity to see it. But, but I just wanted to clarify, and I think I already know the answer, paragraphs one through 13, already pre-existing, no change, we're simply adding paragraph 14 and paragraph 15.
That's absolutely correct.
Thank you.
And this would also be invoked in a circumstance where you had that tight timeline, right? So, you know, it wouldn't necessarily, I mean, if something is ratified on a Tuesday, there's no problem, you know, on a Thursday, when we normally do the agenda. But you could have a circumstance theoretically where, you know, something's ratified Friday at 3:30, and, you know, if staff believes we can still move forward, we put it on the, post it by 4:30 and move along.
Okay, all right.
Let me add, all bargaining units will be given a copy of this, and reminded of it during negotiations.
Yeah.
So that there's no surprises to the bargaining units.
They can adjust their timelines accordingly.
Yes.
All right, we've got a motion on the table, any other discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. So, this brings us to item number 10, which is a status report on Michigan legislation, Senate Bill 54, House Bill 4100, as requested by Mayor Pro Tem Douglas, Commissioner Perush, and Commissioner Dubbuck.
This is going to be Commissioner Douglas, I believe.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yes, a number of years ago, the state of Michigan offered historic preservation tax credits. That is, developers who followed historic design guidelines in preserving a building would receive a tax credit. And those tax credits were eliminated at some point, I'm not sure, along the way, but at any rate, these bills propose to restore those historic preservation tax credits. This is being brought by the, or promoted, of course, by the state Historic Preservation Office. In a city that's almost 100 years old, with older buildings, this could very well benefit Royal Oak. We already have one building that has taken advantage of the tax credits, and that's the former B and C Grocery Building on the northeast corner of Fifth and Main, which is now Jolly Pumpkin. But at any rate, this, these proposed laws, this change, has benefits across Michigan. I don't necessarily need to read the resolution that we have in front of us, but I will point out that every $1 of credit issued leverages $11.37 in direct economic impact, and that the tax credits, when they were in effect over a 12-year period, leveraged $251 million in federal historic tax credits that would have not returned to Michigan, spurring $1.46 billion in direct rehabilitation activity and creating 36,000 jobs. While the resolution doesn't say it, it also reduces the pressure on our landfills, because we don't have construction materials going into our landfills, and they are a significant portion of what we're putting in our landfills these days. Historic preservation also has the ability to preserve the look and feel of a community. And again, in a city with, that's almost 100 years old, with a number of older buildings, we could very well benefit from this. I look at these sorts of things, especially to help improve or, or maintain the look and feel of our main streets, not only here in Royal Oak, but elsewhere. So, for those reasons and the others outlined in the resolution, I move its approval.
Yeah, motion by Commissioner Douglas, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubbuck. Discussion. Mr. Macy.
Thank you to Commissioner Douglas for doing this hard work for us and bringing us this great resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Douglas, and thank you for sharing some of the economic information. I mean, my first instinct was, yeah, we got to preserve things for future generations, and know our history, learn our history, and keep the, you know, you know, our heritage alive. And then, there's also this economic element, which is, you know, great as well, on top of it. So, thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah, this is, I serve on the Michigan Municipal League's Land Use and Economic Development Committee, and this is something that they are advancing as well.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. This brings us to the last agenda item of this evening, which is to request for staff to provide a report on changing ordinances to allow more permeable parking surface options, as requested by Mayor Pro Tem Douglas, Commissioner Dubbuck, and Commissioner Macy. I believe, if I am recalling my emails in my brain correctly, Mayor Pro Tem, you sort of led the charge on this one.
That would be me again.
So I'll hand it over to you again.
Okay. Our stormwater utility process is coming, we expect, in, in formal discussions, will result in conditions where property owners can get some sort of relief or credit on their stormwater payments if they have permeable surfaces on their properties, if they, or in other ways, control or detain or retain stormwater. One of the likely features of that is permeable driveways and parking spaces. And I, I hear this in, in comments just from citizens around town, and in formal discussions with commissioners. I don't sense that the stormwater utility process, well, we have to put the utility in place before we can change our ordinances to implement some of the building and design features that will make those, that stormwater absorption possible. But I would like to see us consider one of those tools sooner, and that is looking at permeable surfaces for driveways and parking in the city. Right now, our code does allow certain forms of hard surfaces that are permeable, but these are expensive. The alternative, well, we don't know what the alternatives are, one of which may, one of which may be aggregate surfaces, gravel, stone, et cetera. At any rate, I would like us to consider asking our staff to present the commission with some options. We would, I would like to know what are other options for surfaces, for driveway and parking surfaces, that are permeable. I'd like to look at residential and commercial properties. We would need to know what ordinances we would have to amend, and we'd like to know how quickly it would take effect, and I say that because it's construction season. You walk around downtown, you see new homes being built. If we can move quickly on this, new homeowners may well want to take advantage of the natural benefits of permeable surfaces, and potentially, the financial benefits. So that would be why I would want to move pretty quickly on this, if we could.
Questions, other comments? Commissioner Macy.
I have some crabby feelings about the stormwater, stormwater utility that I won't get into right now, that'll be for a future meeting, we discuss that. But I think this is such a great idea to get ahead of what we know already is an issue, and what we are, know will be the right thing for our city, to get a good look at it right now, make these changes. I think it doesn't make sense for us to be doing this, all of this work on the stormwater utility, without also, at the same time, making the changes that we know will benefit our citizens, and will, and will make this stormwater utility more appealing in the long term. So, again, glad you brought this up, and I'm glad we're moving quickly on it. I think, I think we've been, we could have done it already, so I'm glad, I'm glad to look at it now.
I will move what I said, and summarize, summarize it if you wish.
Okay, we moved what she said.
As forward as Commissioner Douglas said.
And we have a second of what Commissioner Douglas said.
And we're looking for staff to come back with some recommendations on how we might... And we're looking for staff to come back with some recommendations on how we might change the ordinance to allow for permeable surfaces.
Sir, what services are, are possible? Look at both residential and commercial properties. Examine what ordinances we would have to amend to make it so, and let us know a timetable for implementing those ordinance changes.
Commissioner Dubak?
I'd also add that, and I'm sure staff will be happy to do so, but there's, there's some surfaces that are currently not to code, and there's, there are reasons for that at the time. Are those reasons still relevant? Are they not relevant? So, we can take that into consideration.
What do you mean?
So, there's, you know, we don't allow gravel, is that just purely an aesthetic thing, or is that because there's reasons to not want gravel?
Right.
And to make sure that we understand the pro-con of anything that we're thinking about. I want to put the water back in the ground, but I don't want to create 100 new problems either.
That's right.
I think the main reason in that particular case is to keep it out of the sewers.
Right. Yeah. And I know we even discussed with the Normandy discussions at one time, too, you know, some of the parking there, it's asphalt. But, you know, sometimes you have overflow parking needed in the summertime, and it's very expensive to put asphalt in there, and you really can't use it for anything. And I know the city manager and I were even looking at some of those interesting substructures that you can put below the grass, so you can actually park on the grass.
Yeah.
And then, you know, when it's not a peak time, you can, you don't have to worry about getting ruts and mud. So, there's a whole, I mean, there's a lot of brilliant people out there and places all over the world that have tried a bunch of different things, so let's, let's be leaders on this, this will be great. All right? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. This brings us to the end of our agenda. Notwithstanding anything that we can do to improve the condition of all citizens in Royal Oak here this evening, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Gibbs. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lavasser. Discussion on this very important motion.
Sorry I beat you, Commissioner Lavasser. I know you're usually first.
Wait a minute, are you talking in terms of the speed that awaits you?
The motion is, you know, too close.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.